You're pending Brian Brad about it and that has happened. So really, we're just awarding the contract. That's my reminder to myself.
Morning, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call to order this public meeting of the Johnson County Board of Commissioners on this Monday, June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. At ten o'clock AM, please pray with us if you care to, and then we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Could you bow with me for a moment of prayer? Praise dear heavenly Father, we thank you for your abundance grace. Dear Lord, these are trying times in our nation. A lot of people are suffering emotionally and financially. Dear Lord, we know that the solution to our problems lies with you and putting you first in their lives, considering each other as we would consider ourselves. And moving forward in your presence and your son, Jesus Christ. In his name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started, elected officials and department heads, I do want to just say happy bicentennial. Congratulations to the town of Edinburgh, turn two hundred years old. I had a fantastic celebration down there Saturday. I was really, really impressed and pleased with the with the event that they put on down there. And I want to congratulate Dan Cartwright and the town board and everybody involved with that down there. It was really, really a good celebration and done very, very professionally and well. So really laid back. It's kind of nice to go down there and just relax a little bit and talk to some people and have a good time. But anyway, congratulations to Edinburgh. That's a long time for town in the state to be organized. So really cool. Elected officials and department heads auditor request exception for vacation time from employee.
May I from up here? Pamela Burton, Johnson County Auditor, and I'm requesting for twenty-five hours of vacation time to be carried over for my first deputy to be used by the last week of July, just was not able to get the time in with required deadlines to be met.
Second, I motion second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Emergency management approval to apply for the Duke Energy Foundation Grant. Second, I have a motion second. You can stay seated, Stephanie. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post. Motion carries. Vassia, approval of independent contractor agreement and request for authority for department head to sign.
I'm Lauren Rainier, some Vassia Director, approval for the contractor agreement and to be able to sign it.
I'd approve. Second, I have a motion second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. 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 Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am. Funding and zoning approval of B and W loan care contractor agreement, I would assume for off-site properties.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd move to approve.
Second, I have a motion second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Recorder approval of fiddler lifecycle contract extension. I assume this is an annual.
Teresa Petro, county recorder. It's, we have one every three years. The price is locked in for three years, so.
I would approve. Second, I have a motion second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Recorder. Assessor approval of letter of authorization with augmenting technologies, technologies pending legal review in red on white.
Yes.
Mark Alexander, county assessor. There's two contracts here to provide. Number one is Almentum to create sixty-seven thousand PDFs of our property record cards. And the second one is with Beacon Snyder to put those as a link to their website. This is a new law or statute that was approved this past session to have that for every county.
I would approve. Second, I have a motion a second pending legal. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Assessor. Appreciate it.
Was that for both, Ron?
Yes. Sheriff approval of towing service agreement and other things. I'll just let you get into that. The last one regarding RFID is pending legal review.
Okay, a towing has been purchased by Hannah's. So we need to come up. I'm sorry, Duane Burgess, Johnson County Sheriff, new contract with Hannah's for taking over a towing.
I moved to approve.
Second, I have a motion a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries, sir.
And the next one was the hacker controls. B, that is our camera system in the jail. We want to go with the bronze plan of thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and any one cents on that contract. We utilize them quite a bit for repairs that may have to make offsite. They're doing us a good job. I will take that out of our commissary budget. Then after that three-year period, we'll put it in our regular budget for the county to pick up.
Move to approve.
Second, I have a motion a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Third, impending legal.
Next is the Guardian RFID. Chief Deputy's been working on this. It's a contract seventy-five thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars. What that system does is it essentially takes a lot of burden off of the employee. And that system, they have to essentially go around to every cell in the jail. It's kind of like a barcode. They do that. It automatically goes back to the computer and it logs it. All of you know, just as well, if we have any type of civil litigation, that it's something that they look at is the the times that we're checking on it. So it's just something, it's for accountability within the jail. And it's something that I'd like to see. And after we get started, the first bill is quite quite a bit more, but it will be something later on that we will put into our normal budget.
I bet that sheriff, is there any risk in the wristband? I mean, it's like a hospital wristband that they issue to.
We still have the wristbands with a picture on them now.
Okay, so it does have the picture included. Okay.
Right, we're just continuing that service.
Good. Okay, I've moved to approve.
Second, I have a motion a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. ITGIS approval of Snyder Geo Space, whatever. LLC Professional Services Agreement, spatial, right?
Yes, Chris asked me to present. We are still operating under a contract from two thousand and six. So we've got this updated. We're into the twenty-first century.
I would move to approve. I think it's a very valuable asset for the county.
Yeah, second. I have a motion a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Highway approval of X and execution, approval of execution. Do we execute?
No.
Approval and execution, interlocal agreement with City of Franklin for five hundred east Jim Black Route.
Made me nervous there.
It made me nervous.
Luke Maston, highway supervisor. Yes, this item is for the very northern portion of five hundred east, which is Jim Black Road in the city of Franklin. From the city limits to one hundred north, the city has offered to reconstruct that section of road to match the projects they currently have underway south of there. Pay for the reconstruction and maintain that small eight hundred and fifty-foot section of road under this agreement.
Do we still keep that on our inventory?
We do, because it's so short, it doesn't necessarily amount to a lot of revenue, but I think the the city's thought is that it will be annexed at some point in the future as that develops. So it makes sense to go ahead and do the roadwork now.
I would approve.
I got a motion a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Next item, pending legal review.
Correct. Yes. This item is a request from Center Grove Schools to install license plate reader cameras at the intersection of Stones Crossing Road and Morgantown. Their request is to actually install the cameras on two of our traffic signal poles. And then the electricity for those cameras would come from our traffic signal controller. I talked with our maintenance contractor for the signal, and they don't have any concerns with the installation. And said, whatever power draw those cameras would have would be very minimal compared to what we're dealing with with the signal light.
Did they, they say the reasoning behind these cameras?
I believe it's a safety issue.
Safety in what regard?
In terms, they would serve a similar function as the other license plate reader cameras that have been installed around the county. On main roads, I know there are several that check, they can use to check those license plate numbers against people with active warrants or potentially stolen vehicles, that sort of thing. These are.
I dealt with Center Grove on this, and it's a legitimate reason.
Beyond what they just explained.
In that range, yeah. I'm not going to go into detail right now, but.
If there is an incident, it helps them quickly identify a vehicle and and put that information down, in particular, the license number.
I just struggle with the with the need. It's surveillance is what it is. It's surveillance of the general population. And without some some specific reasoning that's that's pertinent to what's going on there, I don't don't know why they would need it. If they tell me that it's going to help to save the other students and something of that nature and can demonstrate that, I'd say, okay. But just to surveil the general population. That's the sheriff's job, I guess.
I think the school has offered this above and beyond. Obviously, that's unincorporated Johnson County, so it is in the sheriff's jurisdiction. Center Grove does have their own police department.
Yeah.
So essentially, they would be handling the monitoring of of that system and whatever maintenance and repairs involved in conjunction with the sheriff, but so the sheriff doesn't have to.
Actually, all we're giving them is permission to put it on our pole and we supply the electricity. They're the one making the decision to correct.
Yep. Is is the sheriff in agreement with this? Is this something that he's aware of and in agreement with? I don't, I don't know where the sheriff went, but.
Sheriff's point to me.
Yeah, the cameras, Center Grove is wanting to install.
I'm good because they share those cameras with us and just essentially they're probably
Just in the microphone for public record, the sheriff is in agreement with it. Thanks, sir.
I want to approve.
A second. Any further discussion? No. I understand totally what you're saying, Commissioner, and if the sheriff's in agreement with it, then there's possibility that we can help something if something does happen, and we're not directly doing it, then I think that would be the school's responsibility. So I think we just need to be clear. All we're doing is allowing them to use the pole to put them on, so. That said, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries.
Last item is ratification of our N.LPA agreement for our countywide bridge inspection contract. This is an upcoming two-year contract. The county commissioners approved the actual consultant LPA contract back in February, which is needed to develop this N.LPA contract. So this actually came in last week. July is our inspection month, so I requested that Commissioner Baird go ahead and approve it through DocuSign and allow us to ratify it here to give us as much time as possible to get through N.D.O.S. financial system before we have to comply with our federal July mandated month.
I would approve. Second, I have a motion a second, just under further discussion that I did receive this and had our legal and Luke review it, make sure that I was okay signing it. So when anybody think I'm going rogue on that. Oh, in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, sir. We got a lot underboard of commissioners to get going on. First on the list is acceptance acceptance of Chelsea Grider's resignation from the Board of Health, and I assume that's what you're talking about.
I'm here. Do you have Betty Swearingen, Director of the Health Department. Do you guys have a copy of that resignation?
We do have.
I approve. No, okay. I guess we have to accept the resignation first.
We have to accept that. I have a motion in a second to accept resignation. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Now, appointment of new.
Do you have a recommendation of the two?
I do not. I I, they were both brought, one was brought to me by our board member, one board member who is very active on the board, and the other was brought to me by Dr. Pauls. We are seeking a Democrat, and sometimes those are difficult to find. And so we were just excited to have two people who were interested that fit the criteria for the position.
Qualified. Yeah, they got some phenomenal resumes.
Other than flipping a coin, I wouldn't be any help at all at trying to make this selection.
Yeah, that's what I was wanting to get to. It's gonna be a tough decision between both those.
Is there a way you could go back and maybe pull your?
Or is this an immediate need? Do you have?
No, it's not immediate. We have a, we have a board meeting on the twenty-second at seven-thirty, so we could discuss amongst the board, the two of them, and then come back to you. Would that be acceptable?
If we could have a recommendation would be great as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, because I can't, it's tough. It's a tough.
I could bring them both in to.
Above my pay grade.
Yeah, I would. Yeah, I think that would be wise, because I think we're all three in unison on this. It's, they're both carrying phenomenal resumes and both very qualified people.
I cannot, right. And so that's why I don't, I, I don't want to make a decision in.
Oh, so you leave it to us, huh?
That's what the rules says.
Everything's above my pay grade.
They're both really good, so I don't.
Well, let's move the table and then let Betsy pull her people and come back.
Will do.
All right, thank you. My second.
I have a motion a second to table until next meeting. Any further discussion? And then all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries to tables. Thank you. Number three has been removed. Approval of title six plan. Number four, ratification amendment number one of the N.D.O.S. section grant agreement.
This was the extension of the the capital part of the access agreement.
I would approve. Second, I have a motion a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. One approval of construction contract with C.W. Snead Company for Sheriff Storage Building Edition Project.
I didn't get too much cut of it.
Actually, I think it got quite a bit cut for what we were able.
But we weren't, we ain't going with the vision we had when we started.
We did not. We did not. But I think in in the scheme of things, it'll be a really well-done add-on.
Yeah.
Wes did a, Harrison did a very nice job putting that together. So thank you, Wes. Move to approve. Second, I have a motion a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Acceptance of lowest quote award for contract pursuant to IC thirty-six, one dash twelve dash five for Park Department. We're doing these all separately due to the scheme of the projects, correct? So I guess we can just start.
I'll start reading them just a sec.
No, you're.
We sing a song or something.
Can we have a sidebar?
Yeah.
I want a sidebar.
Somebody say candy bar.
I knew that was coming. I really had a feeling. A snicker would be good. Mars bar. Maybe I'll look like Shacks when I eat it.
All right, sorry about that. There's a little bit of confusion. I think that these were quoted separately, but then the total for one of the companies to complete all three was lower than to split it. So, yeah, so your first one, in the Dunn entryway flooring, we have a quote from DNS Industrial Coating for nine thousand three hundred and fifty-nine dollars, from Elite Clean and Seal for nine thousand three hundred and three dollars, and from Monster Coat for seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. Now technically, Monster Coat is a little bit on that particular project, but putting them all three together, Elite Clean and Seal is a little better for the three projects combined.
Yeah. I would move for Elite to be awarded all three contracts.
I'll second that. This, the contracts for other department for Dunn.
Are we doing all three?
Yes.
Yeah, I do have to read the other two, but go ahead.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll read them now. We have a first and second, sorry.
No, I don't have a question.
All right, then for the Dunn dining room flooring, we have Monster Coat at six thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars, DNS Industrial Coating at six thousand seventy-one dollars, and Elite Clean and Seal at five thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars. And for the Dunn restroom flooring, we have DNS Industrial Coating at eight thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars, Monster Coat at eight thousand one hundred and twenty dollars and fifty cents, and Elite Clean and Seal at six thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Clear, direct. Would, just for future for discussion on some of these projects, would it be good just to ask for one that broke out with the three phases underneath instead of having to go through?
Yeah, I think probably what happens, what ends up happening is they're not sure how much they're going to come back at, and so they don't know how much work they can get done with the budget that they have, so they end up separating them out to do the quote.
But you could still do that under one quote broke out with the three, four divisions in it, subdivisions in it. You know, this could have been one quote with all three of the areas broke out, and you can pick and choose through those areas what you want to do.
It just depends on the estimate of the total amount of the work.
I mean, it's.
Because you might have to do a different.
Kind of get you between the rock and hard sometimes, so.
I just know there's a lot of legwork that has to go into all these separate bits on.
It can be a real-time consuming thing, and you're correct, but we we need to maintain that level of integrity that we're required to, so we kind of have to be careful.
We'd be there if you broke them out, so.
And in this case, you know, there might be a position if we don't have the budget, we have to take one of those totally out.
Right.
So we don't really know that till.
You get them all.
We get them all in, so kind of like the sheriff's warehouse, you know, we had to turn everything down, start all over again. So anyway, I do have a motion a second for Elite.
You make the motion.
Kevin Walls, and I second it. Does Ron wasn't sure, I don't think.
Well, when I said all three, I thought he was talking about that first bid taken.
What we can't? No, you're right. We can't. Under the statute, but all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Acceptance of lowest quote award contract pursuant to IC thirty-six dash one dash twelve dash five, which these are, by the way, the Department of Public and Dunn Parking Lot Paving Project.
Now, these nine, ten, and eleven, technically, we accepted the lowest quote last meeting, but I think Commissioner Wallace asked you, Commissioner Baird, to look into, make sure that all the requirements were met.
And they were.
Okay, so.
Just a big spread on those.
We are.
Good reason for that.
So for today, we're just awarding the contracts to the the lowest quarters as you decided at your last meeting for nine, ten, and eleven.
Move to approve.
Have a motion a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Lowest quote award contract for North Index Replace Rooftop Units project, which would be under maintenance. It's under the bond.
Yes, yes, Jason did it. Okay, so we have three quotes on this one. No, was listed three quotes. Edwards Mechanical declined to quote. Saxon Mechanical came in at thirty-seven thousand dollars, and Irish Mechanical was the low quote at thirty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Move to approve.
Second, I have a motion a second. Yeah, we have to prove Irish. And under further discussion on this, this is under the GOP, so this money is actually under budget compared to what we had there, just for information. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Acceptance as well as quote award contract for dispatch installing the new split cooling system project.
Okay, again, we solicited three quotes. Edwards Mechanical declined to submit a quote. Saxon Mechanical was seventeen thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars, and Irish Mechanical was the low quote at sixteen thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars.
For provirus. Second.
I have a motion a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. I've got work to do. I want to thank Kevin and Brad for putting all this together and at the department, of course, Jason for all he does. Anyway, we do a lot of this kind of stuff, so thank you very much. Ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash oh dash eight ordinance authorizing distribution and or expenditure proceeds Johnson County Grant from the American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand twenty-one. Subject is schematic design for hospital road property.
Move to approve.
Second, I have a motion a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Ordinance number two thousand twenty-two, two dash oh dash nine ordinance authorizing distribution and or expenditure proceeds Johnson County Grant from American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand twenty-one. The subject on this is I sixty-nine casing pipe project.
Move to approve.
Second, I have a motion a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash oh dash ten ordinance authorizing distribution and expenditure proceeds of Johnson County Grant from American Rescue Plan Act two thousand twenty-one, subject animal shelter addition construction.
Move to approve.
A motion a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Number seventeen, employee handbook revisions has been taken off, stricken. And a new old business claims.
The Health Department had a claim for spotlight strategies for seventeen sixteen seventy-five, and it was listed as vehicle repair and maintenance. That I don't think that was proper category, because juvenile court had the spotlight strategies for one hundred and fifty-two fifty, and it was office supplies. I don't think they're doing both. So one of the others not right. I think vehicle repair and maintenance.
Well, spotlight strategies doesn't do anything with vehicle maintenance and repair, I wouldn't think.
Unless it was signage that they put on the car.
What? I'm sorry. Betty Swearingen, Health Department. I didn't hear your question. I'm sorry.
It, under Health Department, Spotlight Strategies had a claim for seventeen sixteen seventy-five, but it was listed as vehicle repair and maintenance.
It is. We, that's the decon trailer. We wrapped it. We took the White River Township Fire Department off of it and wrapped it with the Johnson County Health Department and the MRC logo. That matches our other trailers. So that's easy to identify. That matches our other trailers, so that's easy identifiable.
Yeah, I just, when I saw vehicle repair maintenance, because we had under juvenile court spotlight strategies for office supplies, so they do both, huh?
I think they do a little bit of everything.
Printing company, so.
Yeah, they're a printing company, so they printed the low, they, actually, to be quite honest, they were much more reasonable, it was expensive to wrap a trailer. So we got to, we got to, after Connie and Bob and I went out and washed it at the highway garage ourselves, we took it to them and they did a really nice job.
Do you have a line item for advertising? In your budget?
I don't know.
That's probably where that should be.
Advertising, it should be.
Yeah, the wrapping, that's really that vehicle repair maintenance.
We can add one, we don't, we shouldn't have any, we shouldn't really have any work, because this was our last vehicle, but I can, we can do that, no problem.
Yeah, yeah, just a thought.
Okay.
That's all I had.
Move to approve.
Second. I have a motion second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You notice I didn't bring up the three hundred and fifty T-shirt Express at the sheriff's office, because I'm not bringing up T-shirt Express no more.
It's a local company.
That's right. Hey, I just want to give a shout out.
Motion carries.
To some of the departments, I noticed under claims, a lot of departments are buying locally, where I saw an office supplies and a lot of things of that nature, and I just want to give a shout out to good, good work for them for doing that instead of using Amazon.
Well, Amazon's located in Greenwood and Franklin, so they're a local company.
Yeah, yeah. Big supply.
Commissioner Minutes. Seventeen, two thousand twenty-two special meeting, ORPA Committee, five twenty-three, twenty-two, regular meeting, five twenty-four, twenty-two, special meeting, ORPA Committee, and five thirty-one, twenty-two, special meeting, ORPA Committee.
Move to approve all of those.
Second. I have a motion second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. I'll be coming. Anyone? All hearts, stream clear.
Move to adjourn, sir.
Second.
I have a motion second, we're adjourned, thank you very much.